Good evening, Cambi. Welcome to the October 2nd. Welcome to fall, it feels like with the weather. We are starting this evening with a work session regarding our transit master plan. And I will turn it over to I need.
And I'm gonna turn right over to Todd.
All right.
Yes.
All right, hello, everybody. My name is Alvaro, the transit director. What we're here today to talk about is the Transit Master Plan updates. For backgrounds, our Transit Master Plan is similar to the other plans in the city. It's the guiding document. The Transit Department determines where we grow, where we don't grow, you know, what the people would like to see, what they don't want to see, where we're at, where we want to end up for the next five years. It is a required document by the Department of Transportation to receive grant funding. So you have to have this in place. And they ask that we update it every five to seven years. Our last one was done in 2017, so it is due. The good news is, is you approved last year, we received grant money to do this. And Jared Walker and Associates were successful in the bid. They were also the folks that were successful in 2017 then. So Alvaro from Jared Walker and Associates, his team has spent the last nine months updating our Transit Master Plan. And what he's brought for you today is the accumulation of that nine months working here. And he's going to go over what their findings are, what we have, what they're recommending. And the idea today is this is your chance to get input into this plan, to listen to it, decide if you want to have a look at something else, change something, don't like the direction, so I want them to recalibrate. If you come away with, this is pretty good, then they will take it and they will finalize it, arrange to for adoption before the end of the year. If you have some changes, then maybe it might take a little bit longer. That is, that is the goal to say. So I'm gonna turn it over to Alvaro, and he is going to take it from here and provide you with the draft Transit Master Plan.
Thank you, Todd. So hi, my name is Alvaro Caviarres. I work for Jared Walker and Associates, and I have been working with the I D, I C, updating the Transit Master Plan for the next five years.
Thank you.
I have some technical difficulties.
All right. Please.
Oh. Okay, good. So this is the agenda for today. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about our team, who have been working this. And I'm gonna talk very briefly about the existing routes that are running Cambi, so we are all on the same page. Then my colleague Brenda recently called. Usually she's going to talk about public engagement. We have talked to the community and what we have heard from them. Then based on these and the analysis we have done, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna go through some of the highlights of the Transit Master Plan, the recommendations we have for the next five years. And then my colleague Adam also had initially going to talk about capital and policy recommendations. I'm going to facilitate the implementation of this Transit Master Plan. And finally, we'll have questions and answers. But if you have any questions throughout the conversation, just feel free to interrupt and ask them.
Question. And I asked this question at the last meeting, but I still think it's good to clarify. So this master transit program planning is basically, if we put something on the plan, my understanding is it's for the purpose of getting state funding for other transit. Is that correct?
Personally, yeah. I mean, it is not in the plan to stay on funding.
So the thing is, I mean, I talk about the practical legal things. So if we let the leader on, and then have a bus route to Scottsville and back, and it's not in the plan, we have to do it on our own, right?
So outside of the, the purpose of the Transit Master Plan is not just for funding, it's also to help guide us, move us forward, kind of what the community wants, right? So our goal is to implement what's in there, or at least head in that direction. If for some reason along the way, you know, yeah, he really, really wants to go to Scottsville. That's really worked us, we can do that, we can do anything we want. We just can go to the state and say, hey, you really want to go to Scottsville, when you fund it, they're gonna say, show us where is your plan? And we're gonna say, well, it's not in the plan, and they say, that's great, how fun.
So can we go and change the plan first, real quickly?
We'd have to do an updated master plan.
Have to go through the whole process again.
Yeah.
Okay. No, I just, I know, that's a kind of, not advocating if you have a bus route. Are you saying that as an example?
No, 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 no.
But I want to make sure that we're aware as a group.
From Cambi to Scottsville.
To know how the practical effects of getting it wrong. So if we get it wrong, it means we may have less funding than we should have, or not have an extra expense of changing the plan.
Yeah, we would have less funding, we just couldn't get funding for new projects. So I mean, the projects we have now, we can easily fund, they've been in the plan, they continue to be in the plan, they've been funded. So really, I mean, less funding, of course, if the economy tanks. But as far as getting funding, what we have now, that's, that's not an issue. This is really funding for, if you want to add to your system later, they'll want to see it in some sort of guiding document, which is our.
So this, so part of this is aspiration.
A lot of it's aspiration.
So we're saying that we would, if we could, if we had the money, if we would like to do this, if we got more money, and so that's the purpose of the plan, didn't kind of map out, if we get more resources, what we're gonna have to do with those resources.
Yes. And hopefully, throughout this process, we got it right, or close to right.
Yeah, I, I would do that, right. I just, I like to use the hypothetical, just to get the idea of what, what, you know, like, say, if we're across, what if it's Scottsville? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So this team, I just told you, we have three members of the team. Jared Walker and Associates, we were working in the transit route redesign. So just looking at the routes, analyzing them, and making the proposals, the proposals, excuse me.
We have Enviro Issues. They did the public engagement part of the project, so they went out, talked to the community, heard their feedback, their opinions, and all of this was used as a simple to redesign these routes. Brenda is here with us today, and she will be talking about this effort. And then to design, they worked on the capital and policy recommendations to make this Transit Master Plan a reality. Perry was the, or is the project manager, but today Adam is going to present these findings.
It's not working again. Three batteries. Can you click it for us?
Could you click next slide, please?
Maybe.
So going back to your question, I thought was mentioning before, what is a Transit Master Plan? So this is basically a guidebook, a roadmap for CAT, the City of Cambi Transit Agency, just to see how they will invest or re-envision the transit network in the next five years. This could mean how much service they're going to put on the streets, and where should buses go. This is going to be for the next five years. The last time this happened was 2017. We were part of that effort as well, so we had a lot of knowledge from the past and tried to include this in this process as well, but looking to the newer needs of the community that were new. Some of the key goals that we looked into throughout this process was increasing the amount of service provided locally, and also like connecting the city to other cities. We wanted to make transit more relevant to the community's needs. And this is especially relevant because during COVID, throughout different communities, the travel patterns changed a lot. So people were making different trips, were not traveling at all. We wanted to make sure and evaluate if this was true for Cambi as well. And if that was true, just adapt the transit system to these new travel demands. But at the end of the day, this Transit Master Plan, the main goal is to create a network that's useful for more people's trips. So how do we get there? So what we did first was just like analyzing the existing network, the existing routes. Just, we presented this in May to the council, just like main findings and what the market is for transit. Then we talked to the community as well, and wanted to develop this five-year vision, just to give the roadmap for CAT of how to invest additional resources. We discovered that these resources for five years may be short for all the things that the city may need. So we look a little bit beyond that, ten-year. So this is going to be a little bit more optimistic, but we're trying to keep it in a way realistic of the things that are useful for the community's needs and what we heard from people and what we found in our analysis. So what has happened? So we did an existing conditions report. This is basically evaluating the existing routes, how they perform today. We looked at the market, so we were looking at, who's using the service today, where are more people wanting to travel to, from? We also presented this as a resource to the city council in May. We had three phases of public engagement, just asking people about what are they expecting in this Transit Master Plan, where do they want it to go, how can we make transit more useful for them? We did three phases of this. My colleague Brenda is gonna talk about this in more detail. We also to put together the capital and policy recommendations memo, just as I mentioned, kind of like suggesting capital improvements and a policy, city code policy amendments that can facilitate transit in the City of Cambi. And with all this information, we wrote a draft Transit Master Plan, that TNP, I'm gonna be calling TNP, just for sure. It's a draft still, so it's open for feedback, comments. We will include all of this and just provide the final Transit Master Plan that Todd will put here for adoption in the future, but it's still open for public. We closed the last survey to the public, I think last week. We were, we would show them the executive summary of the TNP and ask them if we got it right, if we, what we heard, how we translated that into the TNP was correct or not. So let me talk very briefly about the existing routes. So this is a map of the routes in the City of Cambi. The color of this map, of the lines in this map represent frequency, so how often a bus comes. The dark blue represents a bus coming every thirty minutes in the middle of the day, and the light blue is a bus coming once an hour. I'm gonna be using these colors throughout the whole presentation, so just keep them in mind. So today, there are two main routes in the City of Cambi. The City Loop is a loop that goes in one direction and offers local service and connects the main destinations and activities in the City of Cambi. We also have the 99X. This is the regional route. It connects the City of Cambi with Oregon City and Woodburn. In the peak hour, it comes every thirty minutes, and during the middle of the day, every sixty minutes. There are also other routes that serve Cambi that are provided by other agencies. They are shown here with this pink grayish color. It represents routes coming ninety minutes, every ninety minutes. So they're not very useful, they don't, they don't come very often, but they are providing some sort of service. The first one is the 3X. It connects Wilsonville to Cambi, and is offered by Smart, the Wilsonville agency. The second route is the Molada route, that connects the City of Cambi to Molada. The City of Cambi also offers service, or the service in the City of Cambi is also part of a regional network. You can think that it connects Cambi residents to Portland, to Woodburn, Salem, Beaverton, Hillsborough, all over the region, you can go by bus. The only problem is that service is very frequent, especially if you take in the middle of the day the 99X, and you wanna go to Portland, you have to make multiple transfers if you wanna have like a relatively short trip, but still you have to make a lot of transfers. On the other way, you can go to Salem as well, but you have to connect to other routes. So there is a way to move around transit, but it's not very competitive with having a car or using a taxi. So other people may wanna do this trip in transit, but it's not an option today. In this map, you can see I'm also introducing a new color, the red color. This is a route that comes every fifteen minutes. You can see that most of these routes are connecting Cambi, connecting Cambi routes at Oregon City. So this kind of facilitates the transfer, because you know a bus is coming every fifteen minutes, but still not enough. So we will discuss more about this when I present the recommendations. So you have heard that I have been talking about frequency and how important it is for transit, but if you are not an avid rider, and I think I presented this to you before, but just to refresh it, if you're not an avid rider, I have like a metaphor, just to understand how important this is when you're using a bus. So you can imagine a gate at the end of your driveway that only opens once an hour. So just think about just going to work, you have to know when this gate is going to open if you wanna be on time. If the gate only opens once an hour, you cannot make spontaneous trips, you just have to be there when it opens. If you miss the time when it's open, you have to wait for an hour for the next one to, next time to open and go to your destination. And if you, this is basically how transit works. If you have an infrequent route, infrequently in the field, we think about this, about a bus that comes once an hour or more than once an hour, it's just very hard to depend on like a system like that. People won't use it as their main option, they will have to plan their life around the bus, and they won't, and they would rather find other options to move around. So some of the local routes, or regional routes today, don't offer very frequent service, so people are finding other options to make these trips that they would rather do in transit. And frequency is very important. When you have a frequent bus, a bus that comes every thirty minutes, every fifteen minutes, you have, you are getting three benefits. The first one is reduced waiting time. So as I mentioned, you don't have to wait for the bus a long time, you can just show up at the bus stop, and you know that a bus is going to be there very soon. Another benefit is easier connections. So if you transfer from one bus to another that's very frequent, you know that that bus is going to happen very soon, that's going to come very soon. If you're connecting to an infrequent bus, you will just wait there for an hour or forty minutes until the next one comes, and you don't have anything else to do. And the other major benefit is that if you're waiting for a frequent route for the next bus, and that bus breaks, you know that there's another bus coming soon. So you, it won't impact your day or your trip, you could just have more flexibility. But if you have an infrequent route, if the bus breaks, that will definitely disrupt your day, and you may have to find another option to go to your destination. So in general, also like frequent routes are more useful for people, so it's, it's cheaper and more effective for the agency like CAT to operate, because they will have the benefit of more riders, especially in the regional routes where there is a fare for people to use it. So now I'm gonna have my colleague Brenda talk about the community engagement, the three phases, and what we have been hearing from the public.
Thank you, Alvaro. I am not allowed to turn my camera on, it says that the video, that the host has stopped it. I can present without my camera, but it might be nice for you all to see me.
We're working on that now, Brenda.
Thank you.
Okay, Brenda, we couldn't hear it, you can continue the presentation.
Wonderful, yeah, I'll just continue, and the voice from around you all, okay. Hi, everyone, my name is Brenda Martin. I have met Enviro Issues, and we've been leading the public engagement for the Transit Master Plan. As you can see here, this was our schedule and plan for the engagement that we wanted to conduct during the planning effort. We did already present back in May on our first community survey, as well as the stakeholder workshop that we attended, so I will be speaking to the other tools that we used these last two phases. So during spring and summer of this year, we did conduct some stakeholder interviews. We wanted to really focus on speaking to some of the community-based organizations in Cambi to learn more about what their community's needs were around transportation. We asked them specifically about their top priorities for transit, what could make the TNP more successful for their communities, and then what CAT was already doing well. We spoke to representatives from Hope Village, the Cambi School District, and the Cambi Adult Center. We heard really great news kind of on how we could better serve different communities, you know, anything from having better benches and shelters to providing service to Wilsonville, and more frequent service around the Loop. Next slide, please.
Can you? Click on the slide, because it's out of focus. Okay.
Oh, one more back, I'm sorry. Great. So then we conducted our second online survey in the month of June. This was when we had some recommendations to show community members. And so we really wanted to know where the draft plan was better than the existing network, so you know, what were the changes that the community liked, what their priorities were of the draft plan and the draft recommendations, what they wanted to see prioritized and implemented first. So what services they preferred, and then any additional changes they wanted to see. The survey was open for about a month, from June 6th to July 8th. We did get really good turnout, higher than the first survey that we conducted. We got a hundred and two survey respondents, with eleven of those survey respondents submitting surveys in Spanish. And the survey was shared both online through the CAT website and social media, and we did do some in-person events. And the results of the survey, which will be on the next slide, of the hundred and two respondents who took the survey, ninety-six percent of respondents were really strongly in favor of the draft plan. They actually liked it better than the existing network, so they did feel like it was serving their needs better. When asked to prioritize the improvements, they wanted to see an extension of the 99X to Milwaukee and downtown Woodburn, and then more service on that, on the Cambi Loop. And then when asked how we could improve service on the Cambi Loop, most respondents recommended having it run in two directions versus the one direction, and they liked that compared to just having it more frequently run in one direction. So here you can kind of see a little more visual, the support that we got for the improvements for the Cambi Loop and wanting that kind of two-way loop kind of at a higher frequency than the, just the frequency of the loop. And then the demographics continue to be really well diverse. We're getting a lot of respondents who are Latino or Hispanic, thirty percent. Twenty percent of them spoke primarily Spanish at home. There was even split between age groups of representatives. Many of them also had similar income levels below seventy-five hundred dollars, seventy-five thousand dollars a year. Nine percent of respondents have a disability, and sixty-five percent of respondents do have a valid driver's license, but, or a car available to use. So they are choosing to ride a transit and take CAT. So during the summer, we also conducted some tabling events, as I mentioned, for the second survey that we conducted in June. We attended one of the first Thursday events on June 6th, and we also went to the Bridging Cultures Saturday in the Park event, which is a great way to get more diversity in our respondents. And we really promoted taking the survey, but also sharing information about the draft plan. And then you'll hear more about our third survey that was just conducted here in August and September. And we also attended the Cambi Big Night Out on August 23rd, and the second Bridging Cultures Saturday in the Park event on August 24th. So this third survey we just conducted, it just closed last week, was really to share the draft TNP. So we wanted to get the priorities of the, you know, proposed service changes that were included in the plan, how people overall felt about the Transit Master Plan, and then how the proposed changes might affect the way that they currently travel. The survey was open from August 23rd until just last week, September 27th. We did get a total of a hundred and three survey respondents, so we didn't get any extra last week, but we did get a little bit more Spanish surveys, we got sixteen this time. And we shared the surveys in similar ways to the last time, we did the website, the CAT website and social media accounts, as well as the two in-person events we went to. And then CAT staff Heidi really went far and beyond and did some paper surveys at the Cambi Adult Center and the Bridging Culture event. So we've had really great support from the community on our third survey. Respondents were really in support of that two-way loop and adding service to Wilsonville. The majority of respondents felt that the TNP was headed in the right direction, and we'd love to see that, half of the respondents said that they would more like, they were more likely to ride transit more often now that they saw these improvements coming to CAT. Of course, they're, we did ask them what they felt, or if they had any concerns, and we did hear a little bit about the concern about how would we pay for these service expansions, you know, their fear was that it could lead to higher taxes. Additional service requests that we did also hear from many folks were longer hours for the loop in the evening, and then wanting some service to specifically the Woodburn Walmart. We also heard about the Wilsonville Costco, so obviously people are really trying to get to these key destinations. So this is another look at kind of what the priorities were for the community. They were able to choose up to three, so this is gonna add up to more than a hundred, but you can see there that the two-way loop and then the additional survey, service to Wilsonville were the two highest priorities, followed by addition, by a more Saturday service, and then the Route 99X changes. But overall, they felt that the draft Transit Master Plan was headed in the right direction. You can hear that the majority of respondents were really in support of the TNP and the changes that are being proposed. And then here, again, to really hit home that people are really in support of these changes, not only kind of as a, as a thought, but as actually as a way to change their travel behavior, and they feel that they would ride transit more often with these proposed changes. And finally, some of the survey demographics on survey number three. We did get thirty percent Hispanic, Latinos, seventy percent of respondents speaking Spanish at home. Continue to see that even split in age groups, as well as this time even split in income levels, and then sixteen percent of respondents talk about having a disability, over seventy percent of them a physical or mobility issue, which is obviously something that we consider to be the community that is most transit-dependent. And then last to share, we did do an open house last week on Thursday, September 26th. It was actually during the Transit Advisory Committee meeting, where Alvaro and the team presented the proposed changes. The meeting was held on Zoom and really just focused on answering questions from the committee and making sure that they felt that the TNP was continuing to go in the right direction. And that is it for our engagement for this, as we move towards finalizing the Transit Master Plan, we will be summarizing our third survey at the open house, and then, you know, kind of finishing up our overall summary for the plan. But that is all we have planned.
Thank you, Brenda.
Question or maybe a comment? Could mine with a question? Would it be a good idea to actually hand out these surveys, like, on the bus? That way you get the bus riders themselves? You did do that? Oh, good.
Yeah.
Because I thought, give you on these events, Cambi Night Out and stuff.
Yeah, they send people out on the buses.
Yeah. In the phase one, survey one, we were asking people about like the community values and where they want the TNP to head to. We did go to buses and like rode the buses and I guess people to answer a few questions.
Okay, I'm glad you did that, because maybe, maybe you mentioned that, but I didn't.
In the, we did that for the last city council meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you, Alvaro, thank you.
Based on what we heard from the public and the analysis we did of like how the system works today and what the market is, here are the proposed routes that we put in the TNP. Up before that, just very important, to make this reality, there are two key things that need to happen. First of all, as Todd was mentioning, the TNP is going to be a roadmap to get more state funding to fund these improvements. So state funding is very important to increase service. As part of this document, tool helps us putting together a summary of grants and state-funded sources that CAT can apply to, just to fund some of these improvements. And the second key item is, some of these regional improvements are going to depend on the collaboration with other agencies, especially the agency in Wilsonville Smart and the agency in Woodburn. Well, this conversation has started, and they're going very well, because there is interest in these two communities also to improve the system and the connections to the City of Cambi. So this is the map that shows the improvements we are proposing. Just, I just want you to put, pay attention here to the colors. So again, the dark blue shows. So again, the dark blue shows a route that comes every 30 minutes. Light blue show is a route that comes every hour. So I'm going to go back and forward with the existing network. So you can see just overall, just at glance, there is more, more service and more frequent service to the places where people are going today with other means and also to the places we heard from the public, they want to go there more often. So now let's jump into, let's dive into this of these, all of these improvements. First of all, this is the Canby Loop. So today, this is a loop that goes in one direction almost every 30 minutes in the middle of the day. The improvement, we're making this a consistent 30 minutes throughout the whole day. So you know that the bus is coming twice an hour, anytime you want to use it. And the main thing is now it's coming in two directions. So we asked the public about how to improve this route and they prefer to have it in two directions. This is very important because today, if you go from point A to B, it's going to be different when you go from B to A because the loop goes in two directions, right? So sometimes it takes you out of the way about making it two directions. It just facilitates your trip and make it shorter. Next big improvement is the connection to Wilsonville. So today, as I mentioned, there is one bus that comes around every 90 minutes throughout the whole day between the two cities. It's offered by Smart. This is a very important connection. We have found through our analysis that a lot of people are traveling here by other means, like driving or asking for a friend to take them there. We also found or heard from the public that this is a destination very important to them. They want to go to Wilsonville. In Wilsonville, they also can connect to other options. They can take a Smart buses to Tuatlatin, Tiger, or they can take the West Rail if they want to go north to Beaverton, for example. So there are a lot of transit connections happening there, but today the 3X is very frequent. So what we're proposing is CAT is going to offer an extra bus and collaboration with Smart to make this route comes every 30 minutes. So twice an hour, two buses an hour. And this is going to definitely improve these travel times. Then let's talk about the NINX. Let's talk about the piece from Canby to Woodburn. Today, the bus goes all the way to By Mart. By Mart is in the north of Woodburn and it stops there and then returns. We're proposing to extend this all the way to downtown Woodburn. This is going to be more useful for people just because they will actually reach more activities, more destinations that are concentrated in downtown Woodburn. We also heard that people wanted to go to other main destinations like Walmart or the Allen Mall. There are not enough resources to take the bus all the way there. Also no parking spaces just to lay over the bus there. But if we take the bus to downtown, people can have a shorter walk if they want to go there. And also they can connect to the Woodburn local circulators that can also take them all the way there in a shorter time. By going to downtown Woodburn, people can still connect to the Cherry Oats Route. This is the Salem Route that connects Woodburn to Salem. So people won't be missing anything that they have today. Additionally, the By Mart stop is going to, the NINX won't serve directly, the By Mart stop, but it will serve a stop that's very close, so like five minutes from the By Mart. We heard from the public that this stop is very important because it's located next to a medical facility. So we're still providing service there, a stop there, so people can still reach this location. And the last improvement we're proposing is the NINX to Oregon City and then to Milwaukee. So today, the route stops at Oregon City. And as I mentioned, if people want to go further north to Milwaukee or even to Portland, they have to make transfers. This is kind of like a deterrent for people to use transit because it makes the trip very, very long, especially if you have frequent routes. By extending the route all the way to Milwaukee, people can only take one bus all the way there and make a connection with the Orange Line or other TriMed routes. And then it will make their trips way shorter and take them to the places they want to go. We, as Brenda was mentioning, we presented these options to the public. And they really liked them, but we also wanted to know what should CAT do first. So the priorities were the loop, making it two directions, and the Wilsonville connection. So making it every 30 minutes. After that, we have the connection to downtown Woodburn and the connection all the way to Milwaukee when we have more resources.
I wanted to clarify, make sure I got it right. So you're going to still stop at By Mart, then go to Walmart?
So you want to stop directly at the same stop as today. It will stop in 99E, very close to the By Mart.
Okay.
So it will be a five-minute walk, but it will take you to downtown Woodburn. Not all the way to Walmart, but to downtown Woodburn. There you can connect to other buses that can take you there.
Right now, our bus stop is in the middle of a parking lot. There isn't really a bus stop there.
Yeah.
There's no facilities there. So what we would do is we would move the stop to actually 99 the road. So people could still get off and still walk that distance.
Yeah.
But that would allow us to continue down to a place where there's actual, you know,
Gotcha.
Some sort of facility and meeting directly with the other bus lines. Right now, they come to meet us in the parking lot.
Because I like the By Mart one. I love By Mart.
Do you have, is there a way to estimate how many people will, what the need is? In other words, how many people potentially might need that transportation from Woodburn or from Wilsonville or even Milwaukee? Has that, has there been any projections?
So the tricky thing with projection is that we have to make a lot of assumptions about the land use and how it will look in the next five, 10 years.
Right.
So the analysis that we do is more about the usefulness of the service and how that relates to how many people will ride and jump into the bus. So when I'm talking about frequency, improving frequency, improving connections and improving the transfer between buses, this, it has been proven that these three things with land use are kind of like increase the ridership of the route. So the more you improve the travel time between activities and where people are leaving, the more people will be using that bus. So we have, I can show you at the end of the presentation, some maps of how the travel times are improving between the major cities. And just by improving the travel time, more people will use the transit service just because it will be the better option than using the car or asking for a friend or using the taxi.
Sure, sure. I was thinking of like demographics of people that work, work in Canby because I know there are some businesses here that have a huge amount of people that live in Woodburn but work in Canby. And I don't know if we've actually looked at that.
So we, we look at two things to respond to that specific question. We look at the existing boardings today. We look that, yeah, there are a lot of trips that are coming from Woodburn to the City of Canby. And they, but they, so today the NINX goes all the way from Woodburn, stops at Canby, but it continues to Oregon City. So we look at the ridership today and we found out that most people were jumping off the bus in Canby and they were not continuing to Oregon City. So it made sense to kind of like split the routing too. Have the segment from Canby to Oregon City as one route. And have the segment from Canby to Woodburn as another route. So yeah, there is a lot of people that are traveling from Woodburn to Canby, but it doesn't get as close to the people who are traveling from Canby to Oregon City, from Oregon City to Canby. Like that's the strongest segment in the system. Then we also look at cell phone data. So how, where people are going to or coming from. This data is basically tracks, just keeping the privacy of trips, but it tracks where people are going to. And we found that Wilsonville was a major destination today. And the transit system is not offering the, the service that it needs to comply with this demand.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I'm taking up too much time, but have you guys thought about a route between Canby and Clackamas Community College? Because I know that is an issue for, it was an issue for my children when they were coming from, you know, because high school wasn't working out so much for them, so college was a better fit. But I know there's several people that, the route from Canby to Clackamas Community College is, is kind of complicated for the, for, especially for the young. And, and my son was able to do it and he was taking the transit. He had to go to the Loop, then to the, then the 99 route. And then you have to go to the, you know, Clackamas Community College. And I think it might be a good service for our youth to be able, or people just want to go to Clackamas.
We actually looked at that. One problem is extending the route all the way there will cost an, cost an extra bus. So it will be definitely more expensive, like I think that's twice of what we were planning. But the benefit of improving the frequency of the route is that when people are making the transfer in Oregon City or if they want to go to other colleges, like in Clackamas itself or in Portland itself, just by improving the connection with the NINX with better frequency at Milwaukee, it will decrease the, the travel time. It's not directly there, but people can jump from one bus to another in less time. So we have 15 minutes, so I'm going to go a little bit faster here. So I will, I just want to show you how service changes throughout the day. So in the left side is a map of the route at rush hour. And in the right side is a chart that shows how many people are closest to, are closest to that comes every 30 minutes, so the dark blue. So this is the existing network. You can see that 81% of residents are close to a 30-minute route in the peak hour. When we improve the service by adding the 3X, it moves a little bit more, like 85%. People have access to a route. This improvement is way better in the middle of the day, where you only have a 30-minute service with the Loop and then the NINX, the regional route. So you have fewer people close to service. When we make the improvement, now you have 85% of people closer to, to a bus stop. We'll go back and forward. In the evening, there is only one regional route, the NINX connecting Canby to Oregon City every once an hour, so very infrequent. We will, we heard from the public that they want more evening service and this is very feasible. So we are keeping the local Canby route in the evening. We're keeping the 30-minute to Milwaukee or proposing. And we're proposing the service to Woodburn also once an hour, but in the evening. So this will dramatically increase the service offer at night. This will be a game changer just because people just going anywhere at night can return home. Or people working late shifts, they will have an option to come back home. On Saturday, we heard Saturday they wanted also more service. So we increased the service in the 99X going to Milwaukee. So it increases the amount of people close to it. It's going back and forward. And then last thing, we heard people wanted Sunday service. But in the second survey, we told them that, or we kind of like, through our conversation through the survey, we explained that adding service in the Sunday is going to be more expensive because you just don't need one driver. You also need the staff just receiving calls in the dispatch center, maintenance, you need para-transit. So the cost increases exponentially. So Sunday service is very important because people do travel on Sundays. But this is something that CAT, we're recommending CAT to look in another time after they implement these recommendations that we have today. So now Adam from Tool is going to go over the capital and policy recommendations to make this TMP a reality.
All right, thanks, Alvaro. Also, I think I'm unable to turn on my video, but that's all right. I'm just narrating from here. I am a planner with Tool Design and it's the beginning for Perrin Faulkner as the Tool Project Manager. Unfortunately, couldn't be here tonight. So we looked at a variety of topics and I'll, I know I only have a couple of minutes left in the hour, but go through a number of them. For the existing fleet today, Canby's fleet is slightly larger than comparable small transit agencies. And the average size is, average age of vehicles, seven years. Most in revenue service are either cutaway bus or larger 35-foot bus shown here. There is also a 20-foot van. And generally, we've heard that the fleet size and the vehicle types meet the needs for the current service levels for the fixed route and dial ride. But there are some frequent repair needs and that require longer timelines to procure parts and to execute those repairs. So that requires additional vehicles utilized to swap in for those that are out of service. And some, some of those older vehicles have remained in the fleet to function as those backups. And newer ones are taken out to be repaired. And next slide, please. So our key recommendations are kind of, I recommend Canby continuing to anticipate those repair needs and stockpiling difficult to procure parts where possible. And then gradually right sizing the fleet as pending repair needs are addressed, but also carefully considering the fleet size reductions against necessary repair rotations. And a number of, also looked at kind of age of transit vehicles by their useful life date as estimated by ODOT. So one option that Canby, has been, staff have been interested is replacing some cutaway buses with Class E four transit vans, which we also estimated here, which have lower upfront costs. But there are also some benefits in keeping those larger cutaways in the fleet if they have some lower cost per mile over their life. And these are generally very conservative estimates also because, because they are estimated by the overall life of the vehicle, not necessarily the mileage. And also, we recommended Canby, Canby beginning to shift to electrical, electric vehicles, which might influence the types of vehicles in a future fleet. And this is a good jumping on point as the city is building a new transit facility. And so some existing guidance recommends that agencies procure vehicles and charging infrastructure that could be integrated into that facility where possible. And then also continue to increase the kind of standardization of data monitoring through operator training to ensure that mileage and repair needs are being tracked consistently. Next slide, please. We also conducted a bus stop inventory of 75 stops in the system, both inside and outside the city's limits. So looking, looking at stop amenities, signage, benches, shelters. Almost all stops had signage and poles for identifying the stop, but only 4% had benches and about one-fifth had shelters. And Canby generally has more flexibility for providing those stop amenities on the Canby Loop within the city versus the 99X. It's generally a long, right-of-way and requires additional coordination. And then the spacing for stops is generally good, though one of the recommendations might be providing closer stops in the downtown area where there is a higher density of destinations that people want to get to. And then our recommendations, we provide recommendations for most stops, depending on the conditions of the stop, but generally it's fell into key themes. There's closer stop spacing downtown, providing bus information, more bus information on signs or QR codes, stop IDs and stop names to help riders identify where they are, what stop they're at. Improving accessibility through concrete pads at stops and then adjacent routes. Installing lighting, which could include solar-powered transit lights directly installed to the poles. And then enhancing crossings as riders reach or leave stops, both at unsignaled intersections through things like pedestrian refuge islands or signalized in certain intersections through things like better marked crosswalks or signal changes. We also looked, reviewed the technologies that Canby currently uses. The core ones are Trio Fleet Pro, which is data management for tracking vehicle conditions and mileage. As mentioned before, that helps schedule maintenance. Passio is used for scheduling and service metrics like on-time performance. And historically, it's had some, some issues, but many of these have been resolved recently. And then CTS Tripmaster is used for dial ride and para-transit requests and has generally been working well. Some of our recommendations are reviewing options for onboard displays, which could be coordinated through Passio. And also considering stop information signs that might use E-NC at stops. And then possibilities for upgraded fare solutions that might integrate with other agencies through either Passio or if there were a options to replace it, we provide a number of other similar services. And then we also conducted a policy analysis or assessment for transport of infrastructure. So they really, really included, looking at facilities that people might use as part of their transit trip. Sidewalks, bus stops, nearby development and the surrounding transportation infrastructure that affects bus service, such as curb management. So it covered a broad set of city codes, such as zoning regulations and as well as the public works standards. And generally, and next slide. Generally, the recommended policies fell within two key areas. One was pedestrian safety and access. So expanding sidewalks and pathways for pedestrian access and circulation, improving how people get to and from bus stops. Also promoting land use strategies, such as parking minimums, that are addressing policies involved in parking minimums that create a more rockable urban environment. That would also add your right destinations and expand rider access. And then also ensuring that interactions between pedestrians and motorists in shared spaces near stops are safe for, for all users. And then secondly, the bus stop and transit operations. the bus stop and transit operations side of this policy assessment, recommended creating development practices to consider transit access and service for new site plans and land use design review, and then standardizing curb space for multimodal uses that kind of, including the development of standards for designated curb zones. So transit loading, ride hailing areas, just to reduce those conflicts and kind of establish clear visibility. And, yeah, sorry. And then just, I'll just say that the plan also includes guidance for bus, setting bus stops, things at intersections, near pedestrian pathways, which also address a lot of the recommendations for the, for the bus stop inventory.
Thank you, Adam.
Yep.
So, yeah, so this is what we have been doing and was in the draft TNP right now, open for feedback. So we started this project in winter of 2024, actually November 2023, where like at the final stage of this project, wrapping up the document. So yeah, we are still hearing from feedback from the public. We closed the survey last week, but we will include any feedback we got from that survey into the final document, and also feedback from you, the Transit Committee Board as well, and then have the final document ready for adoption. Thank you.
Great. I really appreciate the presentation. And thank you to Jared Walker and associates for putting this together and working on this so hard, and to staff as well. So Todd and your team, thank you. Heidi. The, it's a component, an important component for sure as we grow as a community. So as we look at this, what do we, when we're talking about extending, the Woodburn route would be an extension into their downtown then from where it is now. Do we, and then with Wilsonville, do we have costs yet associated with what that would look like?
We have rough costs for the Woodburn extension. It's actually a pretty simple extension. It only adds about fourteen minutes tour trip. So I've talked to Salem Area Transit and have asked to put in an application for STIF funding to help fund the Ninety-Nine X and that extension. Whether or not they will give it to us is a completely different story, but we're asking for about $250,000 a year, which will help fund the exit. Because right now, we receive no funding for that, for the southern piece, because it's outside of Clackamas County, outside of technically Tri-Met's region. So, so we're asking for some funding for that. That'll go before the Salem Board, and they'll decide whether or not we get any of that. If not, then we will keep it as we can today until funding gets challenging. And if we can, then we can make that extensions, pretty easy extension for us to make. We just, the funding on that piece is a little more challenging. Woodburn pieces, I mean, the Wilsonville piece is interesting. Wilsonville is very interested in that, but of course, funding is an issue for both of us. But Clackamas County has actually talked to us about, if you're really interested in this, we tend to get some extra funding from the STIF program that we don't necessarily have an allocation for. So let's talk about it. We haven't gotten that far, but Clackamas County is actually interested in helping us pay for an extension where we, we do half the trips to Woodburn and Woodburn does the, I mean, Wilsonville, and Wilsonville does the other half in order to facilitate that connection. So not anywhere really far on that right now. We're going through negotiations with Tri-Met for the next biennium. But that, that came from Clackamas County themselves.
One other, yes, Councilor Sterns.
I'm going to make that just a, probably honorary comment here, but I apologize to the time. But I, as far as your surveys go, and I kind of mentioned the last transit meeting, it's sort of weird, at least from a technical, that you start dividing people according to color and whether they speak Spanish or not, because that kind of confuses me because it kind of says like, I don't need transit, but my wife does because she's got a different color. And then maybe, but maybe I do because I speak Spanish at home. But maybe, but, and maybe my kids might need it too, because well, they may be colored differently. And so I, I just think, I'm just wondering why it's, it's really even relevant when you have confusing, we, we have to divide people up into what their particular skin colors.
We don't really have any say over that. It is required by law for us to.
Yeah. So I mean, maybe you can't, I'm just.
Yeah, the, yeah, we, I mean, definitely the surveys and all the public engagement is open to anybody in the public. But it's required by law that any improvements or any transportation change you do to your system, it can be service infrastructure, that you are not putting extra burdens on people of color or low-income people, or you are sharing the same benefits. You are chained to the whole community with these specific groups. And this is required by the Title VI law.
Okay. Well, I guess you have to do it. You have to. I don't, I don't blame you. It's just, it's just I get a feeling sometimes that it's confusing.
Councilor Patton.
Yeah, I just, I think this, I just think it goes to the point that, you know, when, when transit services like this are more readily available and easier for people to use, more people will use them. It's like when you go to a metropolitan area and those services are easy to use, like when I've gone to New York City, or when I've gone to Baltimore, or recently I was in Chicago and I was near the airport and I was able to just take the train in and take the train back to the hotel. And I didn't have to worry about getting a car or anything like that. So it's one of these things that it's like, you got to put the cart before the horse. And then every time the horse gets in front of the cart, you got to move the cart in front of the horse again. However that works, right? You've got, you're always playing catch-up. You can always do more. But then it comes down to the funding, right? I mean, it would be great if we had the funding to do all this. That is going to be the piece. It's going to be interesting to see how, you know, I would love to see all of these changes implemented. The funding of them is going to be tricky. And it'll be, I know Todd and your group are very good at slicing those pennies as much as you can. And so it's going to be interesting to see how, how well we do that to get all this.
I can tell you the pennies are getting very tight.
Oh, it's getting tinier.
Yeah. We just lost about $80,000 worth of STIF funding for the next biennium, according to the state. We are a payroll tax team and about $75,000 less than we anticipated. So, and then we haven't seen the effects yet of the Nike or the Intel layoffs that are coming at the end of this month. So it'd be interesting to see what the long, long-term projection is. I know like that Milwaukee piece, that's, that is like pie in the sky. You know, the math on that doesn't pencil for a long time.
Yeah.
We would extend to, we would change Oregon City to every thirty minutes, long before we ever considered going beyond thirty minutes anywhere else, just because of the cost. It's just, it's a long haul and it's very expensive. These other two pieces are more reasonable. The, the Loop in the other direction, that's a $400,000 annually proposition. I don't have an additional $400,000. Love to do it, but right now, it's just not feasible.
No. To Councilor Patton's point, and I know that you and I are in those conversations a lot at the coordinating committee on, and we bite our tongue till it somewhat bleeds with a lot of those conversations on the funding and Tri-Met and all that good stuff. But, you know, and I know that I've asked that question about service till, to the Light Rail piece from here. And it seems to me that our connection there in Oregon City is the best bet. And it's Tri-Met to smooth out that connection from there to, to Light Rail, if that's going to be something that's going to be a proposed service. So more to come on that.
That was a real challenge for Canby when Tri-Met stopped running there, thirty-three downtown.
Yeah.
That's where a lot of our ridership dropped off, because that's now three transfers to get downtown. And folks didn't want to make those transfers. Used to be two. You get to the Oregon City Transit and you're going to be called away downtown.
Wow. Okay. So what I see, what I heard from tonight was for the council to weigh the, the citizen asks of one being more service in Canby, so the two-way loop. The second piece is adding service to Wilsonville. Third was longer hours of the Loop is what I've heard is being a key piece for us. Fourth component is the connection to downtown Woodburn, and then fifth being to Milwaukee somewhere. But really looking at the low, the, the first three being probably the most, most important pieces. Is there any, any other information that this group needs from the transit team and from the, the company we've brought in to help us with this, to go back, take a look at, fine-tune and bring back? Or are we good for them to finish it up and bring it to us for approval in thirty days, forty-five days?
Whenever.
Whenever. Okay. Sooner than later.
Depends on how full you're, your schedule is the hardest.
Yeah.
We're getting full for the year.
So I'm looking to you guys, head nods and saying, we're good. We got what we need. We're pleased with this plan. These are priorities we, that we want to meet.
Yep.
No bus to Scotts Mill.
No bus to Scotts Mill. Not right now.
Bullet trains.
We're, we're going to wait for the hover.
Bullet trains to Scotts Mills.
It's a pretty straight shot. I mean.
Yeah, hover cars. That'll get us there. So, so I think you guys have your information that you need to continue moving forward from us.
Yep.
So, yeah, I'm sure that, again, as we, as you all know, this group likes to noodle. And I'm sure when the final product comes back, I'm sure we may have some additional questions. But hopefully this group will think about that prior to finalization. So, okay?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate the work, Alro.
Thank you.
That will conclude our work session for the time being. We are going to take a quick break before we start our city council meeting. So we'll come back in four minutes.
Oh, my gosh.
So hurry.